All right, Danielle.
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or a comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you, and we have a public hearing. And before we get to that, we're gonna have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those men and women who sacrificed their lives for us to be able to do what we do and serve our country, serve our state, and of course, serve our town. Thank you.
So it's like I said, tonight is a public hearing on two code updates that we talked about at our last meeting, amending chapter 145 and amending chapter 67. And what that basically is, where 145 is a vehicle in traffic. What's the matter, Charlie? Okay. It's on penalties, and this is basically for our new traffic tickets. What's the matter? Okay. So this is for the, and then that, we're actually gonna put the fees in the fee schedule rather than in the actual code, so that way if they change from time to time and they get reviewed, it's much easier for the town board to make those updates in the fee schedule at the reorg meeting, so they would be looked at every year. And then it's also given the code enforcement officer the ability to write parking summons tickets, and that leads into amending chapter 67, building and construction, granting the code enforcement officers the authority to issue summons. And again, that's pretty straightforward. And these are some of the offenses that are on the parking ticket. And then if this passes tonight, then the police committee and the chief will meet and will go through and establish what the penalties would be for these specific offenses. So we have a public meeting. If anybody has questions or comments, this is the time to speak. The board members are the public.
So you're saying after we pass, then you're gonna set the rates?
Yep.
And the fees are?
Once we set the fees, and then what we'll do is we'll have a resolution to update the fee schedule based on those fees. So you remember the last time we had the generic ticket?
Right, right, right.
And it had numbers in there from the Poughkeepsie, but we wanna look at surrounding areas and make sure that those numbers are close to what we wanna charge?
What I'm saying is, should we find out what the fees are? I mean, what you proposed to do it, I mean, or?
You have to approve the fees.
Well, we're gonna approve that at another time. I mean, this is just basically setting up the blueprint to write the ticket.
And then we'll have another resolution to approve the fees.
Yeah, then we have to have a resolution, and then I would have whatever the offense is, and I would put the fee next to it.
And you guys are gonna?
And then we would say we'd wanna update our fee schedule based on the recommendation of the police committee and the chief, and then you guys will have that for a week or so, or probably even longer than that. We'll have discussion through via email probably. If you wanna make adjustments, then we can.
I understand, thank you.
So, Mickey?
Just as a suggestion, perhaps the fees could be looked at after your reorganization that you need, which you have on set, so that way it'll be looked at annually.
Yeah, that's what we will be doing. Yeah, that's why we're trying to put it in our fee schedule, because, you know, every year we, every department looks through their fees and says that we need an update, and then recommend it to the board, so it would be the same process. So the chief would do that annually. So, makes more sense, because we really haven't updated these fees in, I don't know, ever since I've been here, so.
I thought it was since 1996.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Little bit of inflation since then, huh?
I just have a question, and I reviewed it, and it looks like the, it looks like what's up on the screen now is a more comprehensive list than what was previous, the cross-out.
Yeah, this is what, I don't have, well, I could go down to the resolution if you want. I don't know if the?
At least what's posted on?
But this is what, this is like all the different fees that are gonna be looked at.
So it looks like what was originally there has now been expanded and more itemized.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's more charges, a lot more applicable violations on the new ticket than there were on the old ticket.
Right, there were only like maybe six or seven. Now there's a bunch, okay.
Yeah, it just, it just, it makes it more specific, so, so you kinda just say like, double parking, blocking the driveway against the traffic, parking in a fire lane, blocking a hydrant, double parking, parking in overtime, parking in a bus zone, parking on a sidewalk, and the big one, violation of the snow ordinance, that's really the big one for the code enforcement officer. But, yeah, it's just a list of all the violations that they typically write tickets for, so now it'll actually be printed on the ticket, and then if you remember what we had in our previous one, it showed like what it would be if you paid it on time, if it was so many days, it would be a penalty, and so many more days, it would be a bigger penalty, so kinda like, we kinda like look at other townships. In this case, we actually did use Poughkeepsie's and the chief liked that, that ticket style, so that's what we went with, so.
I have a comment on this.
Yep.
So I know that the offenses that are listed are pretty innocuous and tame, but people tend to be more volatile today than they were maybe 10 years ago. So in this, with this change, you have your code enforcement officer potentially writing tickets to people versus a uniformed armed police officer, which, you know, God forbid there should ever be an altercation, and right now that person is Tom Corcoran, but it's not always going to be Tom Corcoran. So, my comment is that I think if we are adopting this, that we should also implement, and I'm sure you're ahead of this, but implement some sort of training to whoever is going to be writing these summons, so that there's, you know, no safety risk to them entering a potentially dicey situation.
Oh yeah, that's definite, so. I mean, the code officer in this circumstance is more or less kinda just like if you watched on TV, like the meter readers and the people that do those things, they're not really police officers, they're, you know, meter readers, I guess. It's kinda like the same thing, but the code enforcement officer actually knows the code, so it makes it a little better that he actually knows that, and it kinda goes hand in hand, just, it never was put into effect that way, so it gives him a little more authority.
Training for writing tickets or training for potential alteration?
Well, writing tickets and what you could actually, of course, you could always come into an altercation with someone when you write a ticket, and it's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. So yeah, you have to kinda learn which, like?
Which is like?
Councilwoman Sessha said, it's like, Tom actually has a lot of that training already himself personally, because he deals with that on a daily basis, but like if someone new comes in, of course, that should be something that should definitely be shown to them and how to actually deal with the public in a proper way and protect yourself in a proper way if it gets violent, because in today's world, you know, you don't know what could happen, right? So.
I don't get the impression that Tom Corcoran is gonna be driving?
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna.
Parking in a fire lane.
Yeah.
This is gonna be specific to his zoning violation, specifically his snow ordinance requirement, however, that doesn't prevent him from being able to write somebody for being in a fire lane. Also, major areas of parking violations, 90% of the time the cars are occupied, and if they are occupied, we, the police, can run under the vehicle traffic law, because in order to issue a state GT, you have to have an operator. Without an operator, we go to our parking, which we don't have, and that's what we're all about.
Yeah, and I think it's too, it's like if Tom's in town, wherever he might be, and someone actually puts a complaint in that someone's parked on the sidewalk, or someone's parked in a fire lane or something, now it gives him the ability, okay, I could do something about it now, whereas before it was like, okay, I really can't do anything, I call the police, when they get there, they can get there, instead of him just being able to take care of it right there and then, so little things like that. Like I agree with Jerry, I don't think, I don't really think he's gonna be writing too many summonses, but, you know, you never know, but this at least gives him the ability to do so, so that's really all it is.
Right, and the other thing that the New York State guidelines has, and I think would be good for him, like they take the example of a trailer parked on a sidewalk in front of somebody's house that was there, and so their recommendation was that the code enforcement officer took a photo, it was eight times stand, which I thought was really good.
Yeah. Yeah, picture's worth a thousand words, right? So, and it's easy to do. So, good.
I have one more question?
Sure.
The word registered was for what, the parking ticket, was that me updating registration, or does registered have a different definition?
Where's, where were you talking? Well, that was my list, that's not like the one, that's just, that's just me typing and stuff, so if I?
But it's, so that's not actually part of code?
Improperly registered, it's a, it's from the?
Oh yeah, that's just me probably forgotten to take that thing out.
Oh, I see, thank you, sorry, I didn't see.
Improperly registered, see it flooped around? Yeah, I didn't line that one up right, but I was trying to make a simple?
More vehicles falls under the New York State vehicle traffic law, the reason we left those specifically off the ticket is, we could have taken, but we often don't, because the code enforcement officer is using the same ticket. If we were to quickly unregistered more vehicles, unexpected more vehicles on this ticket, then it becomes a problem that Tommy or the code enforcement officer couldn't write those sessions, especially in the future, maybe Tommy can handle it, but in the future, maybe somebody else can do it, and that means it's an immediately issued ticket, so we left it all there so that if you notice some problems, because if a vehicle is unregistered or unexpected, we can all fix it out, state GT, so there's options we can do without, so we left it all.
Oh, sorry, just Dave finally just texted me, he's not, he's not feeling good. Okay.
And just one last thing, would we consider electronic booking, or is that cost, you know, those low machines they give, or is that cost?
Yeah, no, it's definitely something we can look at, there is a cost to that, and the fact that we don't have funds to buy it every month, it's hard to get, because there's, you know, equipment and stuff like that, there's really just equipment and software.
It's equipment and software, and if we know anything about software, it's expensive when it gets outdated, and so is the equipment, like we're learning that right now, right, Charlie?
To bring in the, just as a comparison, to bring in the old valentars that we had to run the New York State track program, which the ticket system we use, the right state regulations you do that for, costs us back when we did it around 65,000, that was 15 years ago.
Probably a long time ago.
Longer, so bringing the new system in today, I'm gonna guess gotta get these others not to warrant, we don't really worry about tickets and warrants and stuff like that. If we had timed spots or years or so, then I would say, yeah, let's try something, but there is a month, but we don't have enough parking violation, I mean, people would argue, but I don't think we have enough parking violations to warrant. I ain't even sure about the price of this case, can't even print it up. This, if this all gets approved, to print out 2,500 tickets is 1,500, which is expensive, but the order of ticket, from the mailing envelope, it's a complete system that you see in any other town, that brings it back up into this current age, whereas our current tickets are small, half sheer, I don't know, maybe three by five, sock, that we just run windshield, by the time you get a ticket out of rainstorm, it's further away from it. These are not, these are regular tickets you see in big cities, with it already in there, so you just stick it at a stamp, fill it out, mail it in, and it's done. Guess we could probably buy cheaper tickets to people that, people that get tickets, don't know they get them because they watch, this won't happen. So, struggling with going to a full system, I don't think I could ever exist anymore.
Thank you, Jerry, for the explanation. Anybody else?
No.
Good. All right, then I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so then we're gonna get to our regular monthly meeting, and I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. I need a motion to approve the February 27th, 2023 town board meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the February 27th town board minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. I need a motion to approve the February 27th, 2023 public hearing minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the February 27th, 2023 public hearing minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Authorized the payment of the bills of $326,887.82.
I make a motion, we pay the bills?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Comments on the agenda, anybody have any other comments on the agenda? Not, we're gonna go right into reports. My report for March 2023, attended Ulster County Supervisor Mayor Monthly Meeting, the Municipal Center in Marlboro Town, we also had a follow-up meeting to discuss the new county charter proposal the county supervisor will be proposing to the charter committee. Had a Zoom meeting to discuss the Housing Smart Communities Initiative with County Planning Chairman Dennis Doyle and Councilwoman Sessha. The county is asking that municipalities look into codifying affordable housing requirements into local building codes. Had a follow-up conference call with Jane Lennox, General Jester for the Property Claim Traveler Property Casual Company of America. On the north pier, the town will receive an initial payment of the claim of $55,000. This is the check we're gonna first receive, $55,248.57 from the overall $72,176.71 for the dock repair. We also will be receiving $164,218.05 in coverage representing the building code ADA compliance work that needs to be done on the dock. Had multiple meetings with town engineer Phil Bell, building inspector Corcoran, councilman Zambito, and contractors in general construction HVAC, plumbing, electrical to go over scheduling and do the due list, the due list on the Tombeck renovation project. Met with school superintendent Mike Riddell and Roseanne Miley to discuss intermunicipal agreement between the town of Marlboro and the Marlboro Central School District for the use of the office space per town board approval. I informed by written letter to the school district, the town's intention to renew and extend the term of this agreement for an additional period of 10 years. So I wrote that letter and gave that to them for the use of this building. Held our annual town workplace violence, sexual harassment class with all town employees, had a meeting with Chief Cacosa and Code Enforcement Officer Corcoran to discuss the new tow applicant requesting to be put on the towing list. We also discussed the possible updates to the tow list requirements. Had a follow-up meeting with Herb Litz and Sean Grimm from GPI Engineering to go over Highway and Water Department Building Renovation Project. Had a follow-up meeting with Dennis Larros to go over the Marlboro Sewer Expansion Project and the declassification of the Marlboro Reservoir, which will help our insurance. Met with landowners and Highway Department Superintendent Alangi, Deputy Superintendent Lazaroff, Water Superintendent Majeo, Councilwoman Zambito, discuss water accumulation issues at the corner of La Milla Drive and Ridge Road. Met with town engineer Brandy Nelson, Councilman Zambito, Building Inspector Corcoran, and Deputy Highway Superintendent Lazaroff to go over the preliminary plan to rebuild the north pier at the Milton Landing. I should have a proposal from Brandy at our next meeting for the board, so on that. Had a follow-up meeting with Dallas Mansion Business Development Manager Nexamp to discuss the new solar farm being built at Bailey's Gap Road, and we possibly will have an agreement next meeting on that for a pilot agreement for taxes on that property, which has been going back and forth quite a bit on that. Met with Councilman Zambito, Water Superintendent Majeo, Cliff Road, Bruno Keller, Highway Superintendent Alangi, Deputy Superintendent Lazaroff, Chief Cacosa, crossing Platteka Road to discuss water extension loop for the water district. This would be approximately 1,200-foot extension along the Platteka Road to Medeville Drive. It would provide secondary loop of our main water supply to our water district users. Orchard, it's not Medeville Drive, Medeville Drive's the other one I asked you to talk about, so Orchard View Drive. I don't know if you guys are aware of where this is, this is up by the high school at the corner of Platteka Road and right at the high school there, and basically there's a dead end right there of the water main, and then if you go up to Orchard View Drive, there's another dead end at that end, and so there's no connection between the two. So last year when we had the main water main break, and there was no water in the town, if we have this connection, we wouldn't have had that disruption in water service. So we, we've been pushing this off, it's another one of those things, we've been pushing this off for many, many years, so not to say we're gonna do it right now, but I at least have the guys figuring out a plan, how to do it, and what the costs are gonna be, and then we'll present to the board what that would be. But it's something that really does need to be done, so. And the guys agreed, by the way, that, you know, our highway department and the water department would do this all in-house, I mean, but the cost of the material still is quite expensive. Had a Zoom meeting with Edmunds Government Tech Software Representative with Tina Rosen, Christine Williams, discuss the upcoming software upgrade, upgrades to transition from BAS software to Edmunds software, and talking about software upgrades, this is a very expensive upgrade, but we'll get to that when we get the real numbers, because I wasn't satisfied with the numbers they gave us, so. Had a follow-up meeting with Water Superintendent Majeo and Councilwoman Zambito to discuss the meter reader upgrade needed for our Badger system, and Charlie's also following up on what Councilman O'Nellie asked for, for secondary quotes from other vendors, and also we're talking to our Badger representative also to see if we could shave some money off their quote, but the problem we're having Ed with that is, a lot of these new vendors want us to replace the heads on all the meters, so it's a, it's not just a software upgrade, it's actually you'd have to replace all the heads on all the meters, so Charlie's looking into another vendor right now that possibly that might not have to happen, but that's really where the expense would come in if we went to someone else, so.
The only reason I'm, you know, with the ambulance corner last stuff, saving money. I could save some money anywhere, I will.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna try, so Charlie's working on it, so. Had a discussion with PBA Union Attorney Anthony Safaro, discussed the new SRO position and exchanged dates for upcoming union contract negotiations. At least I gave dates, he hasn't given any dates back, so, and I gotta get Eddie's, because I gotta give Eddie the dates, so.
I'm sorry, I missed that discussion with Safaro.
No, he just called me to talk about the SRO, that was it, and then I said, well, when we gonna start the labor negotiation, that's how that came up, but, so. Attending the CAC meeting with Councilman Couchy on the topic of passive housing techniques, hosted by Mickey Semenowski, so, good, good meeting, and that's my report. And where's the other reports, mine is right under here. Okay. So Tom's not here tonight, and if you guys are okay with what he reported, I'm not, if they're not here, I'm not gonna read the report to save us on some time tonight, so does anybody have any questions on Tom's report? If not, it's all online, anybody out there would like to actually get their report? It's right online.
The only, the only thing that sticks out at me is that I see the complaints, 38, usually it's around 20.
Yep.
Is there a particular reason, that particular, what happened this February short month that was 38 complaints?
I don't know. I don't know, he didn't, he didn't give me any, like, something out of the blue, there was a lot of things going on this month, but, you know, maybe the weather got better and people were coming out of the woods and doing stuff, I don't know, you know, but it just, if you have a question, oh, just send it to Tom, send him an email, even on vacation, trust me, he'll respond.
No, no, I, 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 I've seen.
I bug them a lot of times.
It just caught my eye.
Yeah, 38 complaints.
Now you got 38, just wondering if there's something?
Wait till we get to the summer, you'll see a morning 38, that's when it starts to happen. Okay, so then I'm gonna move on to Jerry's report.
Okay, activity summary for the month of February 2023. Personal injury accidents, four, fatal zero, property damage 15, for a total of 19 for the month. Vehicle in traffic tickets issued, 175 with zero parking violations. Lotter entries made, 1,013, with a total of 23 arrests. Telephone calls handled, 876 calls, overtime for part-time dispatch, eight hours. Police mileage for the month, 10,711 miles, with a fuel consumption of 933.226 gallons. We did not have any use of force complaints, we did not have any civilian complaints for the month of February.
Question for you, you had 175 as opposed to 75 the year before, did we have special?
Nope, we have two new officers.
Okay.
Who are freshly out of the academy.
Okay.
And they are?
Making sure nobody violates, does any violations?
Doing what the young officers do.
Okay.
To that negative, one of them called me today, they're leaving on the 22nd to go to the town of Poughkeepsie, so we lost him, that's Kevin Cornell, the guy we just put through the academy.
Kevin is?
Yep.
Already?
Yeah, well, they?
He told me he wasn't leaving.
They all tell you that.
They all say that, but, yeah, so that's, that was some bad news we got today. He would've, he would've worked out well here, he had good availability, he was a go-getter, but that would be why Poughkeepsie.
Poughkeepsie?
Town of Poughkeepsie, and he'd be foolish to say no to that town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good job, so.
One other note is our bottom more camera program is moving along very well, they are all hooked up and functioning, we are in a trial test mode right now, we are scheduled for April 12th for Axon to come down here and teach us how to work the redaction program and how to work the evidence transfer program. Once we get that training, and hopefully before that date, we'll have a policy for the board to review and accept, and then shortly thereafter, maybe the 15th or so of April, we will look to go permanent required and full-time wear of the body cameras.
Good.
So that, that's a huge mental step for us, goes along with our police reform, which was a huge recommendation in our police reform that we move forward with these cameras. Thank you to the board for allowing us to get them, and I'm sure the board is aware that we did get that $32,000 grant, even though the cameras cost us $56,000, it was a big chunk of that taken off by the grant. Of course, we'll look for future grants, maybe we can expand the program, but for now, we have 16 cameras, which does about half our department, so eight will be assigned to a specific officer, and then the other eight will be generalized for anybody to take with a sign-out process that we have up there.
So you turn that on and off manually, right?
You can turn it on and off manually, we bought a device that goes on the gun holster that if you take your gun out, it activates your camera automatically, as well as a device that gets wired into the car that when you activate the car lights, it activates your camera. So there's three ways, of course, the trigger device that we bought for the car, you can hook up a lot more sensors, you could get speed, you could get siren, there's a gunshot detector, there's lots of things you can do, but because of cost, we were able to just get the one for the lights.
So once that's automatically turned on, they can't turn it off?
Yes, they can.
Let's look at?
Well, no, physically you can turn it off, policy dictates you can't. Correct, so if you hold the button for three seconds, it deactivates the camera and shuts it down. If you're in the middle of an event, our policy will dictate, if you're in the middle of an event and you shut that camera off, you need to explain why and report, but the general policy says that upon any interaction with a civilian, you will act? that upon any interaction with a civilian, you will activate your camera, and that camera will stay on until such time that interaction is complete, whether that be an arrest, or have a good day, or whatever the results might be. We will not be recording inside the police station. We have a separate system that records people that we place under arrest. We're still working out details about how we're gonna use them in the school. We can't find any rules that say you can't record a juvenile. So we're thinking we're gonna use them, but the SROs interact with people all day long. That'd be just about an eight-hour video of, I don't wanna say nonsense, but of nothing warranting police, police action. So we're trying to come up with a stricter policy for the school purposes. You know, obviously, if they're investigating a fight or, or something like that, I'm sure they're gonna activate it under our standard policy. But we're still working those bugs out. I'm sampling Lloyd's policy. We have Cornwall's policy, Ardsley's policy, Town of Poughkeepsie's policy. We're trying to meld them into something. Oh, yeah, the state's generic policy as well. We're trying to meld that into ours that works best for us.
So if they pull a call over for summons, they're supposed to activate it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any call they go on?
Any call. The only, there are other rules in our policy that dictate medical calls. The policy is big on types of calls that involve naked people. You know, a lot of times with emotionally disturbed people, especially if they're on drugs, tend to run around naked. You have to use officer discretion. I mean, if it's a full-on fight, you're recording it. If the guy's just running around naked in his house, you're not recording it, you know, type thing. There's a lot of officer discretion in that. The big thing with that is you're gonna need to be able to articulate why you did or didn't do something, just like everything else we used to do before cameras. But now it's on video. And playing with the cameras, doing some of the tests that we did, they're great. I can't wait to actually show you guys some of the test videos of us running around and doing whatever we're doing, rather than the public, so you can see how well those cameras work both day and night. They work very well. The audio is awesome. There's a lot of administrative abilities with these cameras. I'm just, I'm so glad that we actually were able to get these and do this, because by far, so far, all the ones that I've seen, Axon's the way to go. I was a little disappointed I can't put the officer's name on the specific video, because we don't have enough cameras for everybody. But maybe someday, every person will have their own camera, and when they play a video, it clearly say Chief Kokosa in the corner, and you'll know.
But it's, everything's timestamped, so you know who's on it.
It's timestamp, date stamp. And like I said, the ones that we did assign to some of the officers, we used a shield number, so there's a reference to it. But if you ever go on YouTube and watch Axon videos, some agencies actually have G Kokosa or whatever. And there's no doubt as to whose video that is. It's not very hard to distinguish, you know. In order, when you pull a camera out of our charging dock, you use it your whole shift, you throw it back in the dock, and it, and it registers the, well, you go into computer login, it registers the video to you. So there is an auto trail to it. Your name's just not on the video.
Gotcha.
I personally was fighting to try and get our names on the video, because silly proof then. There's no, no confusing on whose video it is. You don't have to listen to the voice, because you don't see the officer.
Right.
Right? Because it's center body out. But economically, to spend all that extra money just to get our names on the video wasn't worth it, so.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jerry. John's not here tonight, so same thing to save on time. I can just tell you that the guys have been cutting trees and doing, getting the ditches clean. They've been cutting trees at Tombac for me in preparation to widen out the parking lot, straighten it out a little. And they've been doing signs, and they've been doing a lot of stuff and getting ready. We had some minor snowstorms, and of course, they're getting ready for tonight's storm. So they're all sleeping tight right now, hopefully. And Charlie, you're up. Charlie, thank you for always coming to our meetings.
He misses us.
Not the Zoom meetings.
Not the Zoom meetings, though, no.
Good evening. Monthly report for February. Water consumption totaled 14,097,000 gallons, which is a daily usage of 503,464 gallons, compared to last month, which was 15,666,000, which is a daily usage of 505,354. And compared to a year ago, our consumption was 14,554,000, which is a daily usage of 519,806. Summary for the month. Billing went out in the beginning of the month. If there's any problems or questions, feel free to give us a call so that we could alleviate the problems. Curb box, curb boxes, we had to repair three curb boxes on South Street meters. We had to replace five Orion meters again. Service line, we had to repair a service line on South Street. Sewer, we had to repair sewer risers on Anna Place and Jackson Avenue. We insisted in installing security system in the Milton sewer plant. We also had to cap off a well and assisted in installing a French drain by the train station. We also worked with the highway department on South Street extension over our water main easement to prevent water and debris from getting on the road. So we go to closings for, markouts 30, gallons of gas 170, gallons of diesel 20, and mileage for the month 1,200.
Thanks, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie? Thanks, Charlie.
No, thank you, Charlie.
Appreciate it. Town Clerk Monthly Report. Danielle is here, so I could say Colleen's not here, but...
All right. Town Clerk Monthly Report for February 2023. Burn permits equalling $45. Total dog licenses 13 for $70. One water service for $3,000. Six transfer station permits totaling $386. Fifteen transfer station punch cards totaling $1,368. Marriage licenses, one, $17.50. Building department fees totaling $24,355.34. Building department fire fees totaling $3,300. Accident reports, 13 for $65. Bank fees, two for 60. Burglar permits or alarm permits, one for $20. Certified copies, five transactions totaling $170. Foil requests, two, equalling $4.25. Park fees, four, $1,600. Grand total, $34,461.9.
Thank you. Any questions for Danielle?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Water quality management. All I could say is that the sewer plants are holding up well.
They're getting older, though.
They're getting older, though. Okay. Thank you, Julian, for all you do. So. And dog control. We did have three active complaints and three open cases, and one impounded dog this month. So, and he wants, March 20th is the first day of spring. There's lots of dogs and walk-in. Please keep your dogs leashed and when visiting in our parks and recreation area. And Manny, that's when my, my brother will get more complaints. The springtime.
Dogs unleashed.
Spring comes and everybody's out and everything goes crazy, so. Planning Board, same thing. It's all online. Just so you know, we had escrow fees of $11,572.96. Recreation fees of $12,000, and invoices of $6,261.2. And it's all online. Thank you very much. So now we're gonna go to Reports of Committee.
Your screen's all up there.
My screen went off? Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah, it did.
Charlie, what'd you do?
Do you want to start?
Reports, we had Recreation. Sherri, if you wanna start talking about Recreation.
Yep. The Recreation Committee is having their monthly meeting tomorrow at, well, pending the snowstorm. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet tomorrow. The meeting is at 6:00 at BRICS, and that's an open committee, so anyone is welcome to join. We have had a couple of new committee members jump on board in the last couple of months, so that's great. We're seeing some more engagement throughout the community. And we have our slate of events starting to kick off for the year. So the first major one is Saturday, April 8th, and that is our egg hunt, which we're calling the Easter Egg Dash this year.
That's more appropriate.
Yes, yes. Mad dash to the eggs. So that is taking place at the Dome, and it's a Saturday morning. So we're very excited to have that availability and thank the Pisa family for getting us that availability at the Dome on a Saturday. Second event of the year is being hosted in collaboration with the Marlboro Elementary School, and that is on Saturday, April 22nd. That is the first-ever autism color run that we'll be hosting at the town park. So that should be fun. All of the elementary kids are able to run in it if they would like, and they have a chaperone that has to run with them. So very big thank you to the Marlboro Elementary School Special Education Department for spearheading that one. And then the Spring Fling is the third event in April. So we have a very busy April coming up, and that's in conjunction with the Hamlet of Milton Association, and that is taking place on the 26th of April, which I believe is a Thursday, Wednesday, sorry. And that's taking place at Locust Grove. So it'll be a busy month, and then onward.
Busy, busy, busy. That's good. That's awesome.
Yes.
All right. Emergency Management Prepariness Committee. I have no updates on that. CAC
Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody.
Thank you.
The CAC met in person as well as via Zoom on March 7th. We were very interested in the presentation delivered by Jeff Echus, Certified Passive House Tradesman. He spoke of the basics of passive house construction, explaining how specific insulation and construction techniques render a building to be energy efficient, thereby saving the owner costs. Using these techniques on new construction, the savings could prove to give a return on investment in as little as five years. We hope to make this information more widely available as passive housing applications can reduce carbon emissions, thus saving the environment, but also to help homeowners who are renovating or planning new construction on ways that they can save money. We also plan on having a display at the forthcoming Main Street Milton Blossom Festival planned for April 30th. One of our members, who is also a beekeeper, will be showing the importance of bees and agriculture and our environment. We want the public to know that the Department of Environmental Conservation is once again offering its Trees for Tribes Project. Municipalities as well as private landowners may apply for free bare root plantings. These are especially intended to protect areas such as streambeds. For details on an application, you can visit their website, and when, they can go on the town websites to get the links. The CAC will be checking in as well to see if plantings will be appropriate for any town-owned properties. I'll report back on that if I can, if it can be determined that this would be of benefit to the town. And since our meeting, I did go to Young's Park, as we discussed at the meeting, and it does look like there would be places there, for example, that we could do that, and probably other places in the town as well. So I'll see what works out for that. We welcome new members and new observers. We plan on sharing a Zoom meeting link for all meetings so that people can find out more about Climate Smart Communities and our CAC activities. We will also be offering notices to go on the town website about our work. Our residents are encouraged to follow us there until we can develop our own social media. And as I say, any citizen who would like to volunteer their skills on social media, land research, environmental experiences, and the like, would be welcome. Respectfully submitted, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mickey, since you're hosting all of the meetings on Zoom going forward, would it make sense for us to start recording those and archiving them on like a YouTube channel or something, so people can go back and watch them?
I guess we could. I mean, at Danielle's expertise, she's the YouTube person. I guess we could. If she, if they send them, if you send them to us.
So then...
Oh, so I just have to send you the Zoom link? Yeah.
And then, because doesn't it have to be recorded from our computer, right?
They have to record it, though.
If it's on the media, it's recorded. You can send me the recorded file, and then I can free the YouTube.
Okay, all right.
On the page, open the CAC page.
So I will check in with, with my IT member to make sure that she knows how to do that.
Janelle's gonna be killing you.
I'm sorry, Danielle.
Janelle's gonna kill you.
Well, this is why we need new members. You know, it doesn't have, the CAC doesn't have to have...
She did a good job, didn't she?
Just environmental things, but, and she'll take it in her stride, anyway.
I just thought of it because I had a conflict for the last meeting and forgot to ask about the recording until the last second, so.
That's a good idea. I mean, you're having it on a Zoom. Why not? If you just record it, we could put it out.
Exactly.
Who's Zoom subscription do you have?
Right now, we have one of our members, Janelle.
If you don't subscribe, depending on the subscription, you may have to report.
Yeah, you have to pay for that service, right? I mean, we went through that when we got our subscription.
So, so, not to get too involved in this, maybe I should just talk to Danielle, but if the, if the town has a Zoom link, that we could use that instead. But we'll, we'll talk, Danielle.
I'll be tomorrow.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that you're doing a very good job as chairman, and your committee members are doing well and very informative. And I really enjoy coming to those meetings, so.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It was good. All right. IT Committee. I could just tell the board, myself and the chief and Gary Lazaroff met with first person for IT stuff for the Community Rec Center last week. Hudson Valley, audio visual, right? Audio visual. I have another meeting or two this week. So this is for like the audio visual at the Community and Rec Center for pull-down screens, projectors, TV in the conference room, and all the audio that goes in speaker-wise. So like, when the rec committee wants to have their big parties and things there, they'll actually have good quality stuff to zoom in on. And when the Zumba does their stuff, they're like, they'll get some really good speakers that we have, but, well, depending on the cost, of course. So, so be prepared to see those estimates come. But we're, we're getting them now, because it's the time to do it, because all the walls are still open. So Milton Train Station Foundation, I have not gotten anything back from them. I know they had a meeting, but I didn't get anything back from them. Milton Landing Citizens Committee, I didn't get anything from them. I know you did the, you said the Spring Fling, right?
Yep.
Marlboro Hamm Economic Development Committee, I've gotten a report from them. Meet Me in Marlboro, I did just get a report from Sheila. Do I have it here? Did she send, she sent it to my other email, of course. Hold on a second. I should've So you guys know we're doing the banners along 9W that legislator Corcoran was doing for the hometown heroes. Meet Me in Marlboro had approached Tom about also doing some banners in the town like this along 9W or at certain locations along 9W. I told her I'd ask you guys what you thought of these designs and what you thought about having these put up in addition to the hometown heroes. Now, I can just tell you right now, as of now, we have 60 hometown hero banners going up. Six, zero.
Wow.
As of now. They're gonna be more probably coming, but we just placed our first order, and that's 60 of them. So the only thing I told Sheila, and this is like, I don't have a problem with this. I just would want them to limit it to 10 or less, only because I don't want the whole hamlet to just be like, you know. And I don't want to take away from the hometown heroes either. So, but I do, you know, their purpose of this is to, when people go through the town, they're gonna see those, and then they'll see these. And it kinda like, yeah, Marlboro, this is their, you know, their thing. So it kinda brings them to their website, too, and the trails. And then also, from there, it tells them and then also from there, it tells us about what we're doing in our town, because they have a really good way of putting stuff on their website. So I'm just gonna, what do you guys think? Do you guys want to have these, or are you okay?
I agree with you.
Put it on the Wood Nine Corridor, is that?
Well, so is the Hometown Heroes.
The corridor mostly, because she wants people, as they're driving through the town, to actually see these. Maybe at like locations closer to the hamlet, because hopefully in those areas, they're slowing down a little. She said maybe one at the, you know, the Highway Department building on that post. I mean, she hasn't given me the post numbers yet. That's why I told her, you gotta give us where you want to put them, because then we would have to call Central Hudson and get the okay from Central Hudson, kind of piggybacking off the Hometown Heroes. So we have every one of those poles, we have to register through Central Hudson, so.
How big are these banners?
They'd be the exact same size as the Hometown Heroes signs. Basically, what they're doing is they're piggybacking off of what Tom's did. She's always thought about, and I know Meet Me in Marlboro's always thought about doing this. They just never got it all together, but now that Tom has everything laid out, and it's pretty much, if you want to order them, you could do it, and she knows the cost. So she approached Tom, and he kind of felt the same way I felt, in a way. He just didn't want to make sure that it didn't, you know,
overpower.
Overpower what we're trying to do with the Hometown Heroes, that's all, so. And she said, well, we would do like 10 or less, if that's okay. And I said, well, I'll ask the board, so. It's up to you guys. And if you have any negatives, just let me know. If you don't, then I'll assume that, you know, we'll go with a limited amount.
I'm okay with that. Like I said, just keep it at a lim-
And I don't think the designs are, they're typical.
Same as their sign.
Meet Me in Marlboro sign, it's just that they got dining, like, I don't know about craft beverages, I don't know about that one. Farmer's Market, Farm Trail, so like this one, they probably want to put up by the park, right? Obviously. Farmer's Trails, where the, you know, probably in Marlboro, where they start the Farm Trail. Dining might be like, you know, up by here, by Mr. Pollack's sign or something like that.
I mean, I actually like them.
I think it's really good.
Yeah, I think they're very nice. I actually would like to see them take it a step further in the future, where they have, you know, these few, the 10 or so that are up the corridor, but then have a corresponding one next to the actual business to kind of tie it together and help people get around, but maybe that's phase two.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, you're trying to distinguish your town when people go through, like, and you have certain signs and stuff. I know like when I go through certain towns, I'm like, oh yeah, now I know where I'm at, because they have certain lights, or they have certain fixtures, or. So that's what they're trying to do, and I get it, and it promotes Marlboro, so it promotes our businesses, which is a good thing.
Yep.
So I think it's cool.
Yeah, I think it's nice.
And then she had a little report, I don't know if it's a little report, but let's see what's going. Should I go by the rest of them? If it's not read, if they're not here, I don't read it.
I know, you're bending your rules, but I like it.
So Meet Me in Marlboro, Town Board Report, March, April Newsletter Promotion Link, so they have a link to this, and Danielle will put this online, right, Danielle? All right. Follow-up, Meet Me in Marlboro Grant Boulevard Banner Project, that's what I just talked about. Yearly Community Calendar, including Meet Me in Marlboro website. So if you ever haven't gone to the Meet Me in Marlboro website, they do have a very good calendar that they put out for the year, and they have not just their own events, but they have recreational events that the town has, they have events that the school has, and other social organizations. They have it all on their website. So it's kind of like a one-stop shopping. If you want to know what's going on in town of Marlboro, go to the Meet Me in Marlboro website. Creation of Meet Me in Marlboro Map and Businesses Listing Posters to be displayed in member locations, Quarterly Member Meeting, Network Events, Planning Year's Dates, so there's all these events that are coming up. And again, you could go to their website, and you could find out all these dates. Latin Town School Chair, so Sheila met me here at the town hall, and she donated a Latin Town School Chair, donated by Joseph Camovia, who's, and it's upstairs in the main lobby, next to the post office boxes that we have in the lobby displaying, so it's pretty cool. There are informational plaque about the Farmer's Statue Creation to show the history of why this statue was created, by whom, and whom made it included in the statue. So she wants to, gee, we have the Farmer's Statue, we have the chair, we have the Milton Post Office box. What they want to do is, I told her, if you can, like, get a little description for each thing, and we'll put them on there, so when people actually see them, they know what they're looking at, right? So, and then 12 calls scheduled by American Cruise Lines, so that we know that we already got their check. And a welcome letter has been created as soon as will be sent to new residents on our community. So thank you, Meet Me in Marlboro. And Hamilton and Milton Association Committee, nothing else. And Transfer Station Review Committee, I have nothing. I have no presentations. And on old business, the Tomback is always on there until it's done. I wish it was done, but it's not, so. But it's still going forward. Again, there's no real new news to talk about, except plumbing has started, and they'll be doing a pressure test, I believe, next week, so that, and then once they get all that completed, they could put the cement back on the floor, and then they could start framing in the bathroom. So the inside, I would say, is 70% done for HVAC, and about 70% done on electrical. And I would say the contractor's probably around 60% done on what he has to do, so. And then he supposedly has all the siding and the windows and all that ordered, so we're moving forward. New business, anybody have any new business that you want to add for next meeting? We can do that. If not, I'll go to my correspondence. I got a bunch of correspondence this week. First one is from Mrs. Sylvester, and this is just like last year. Scott Corcoran, Town Marlboro Supervisor. Dear Supervisor Corcoran, as a resident of the Town of Marlboro, I would like to ask that the line dancing program at the Clue at Shands Park we've held this summer, I spoke with Mr. Alexander, and he's interested in running the program again. It will be held every Monday evening from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. from June 26th through August 28th, 2023. I am asking the Town Board to please waive the fees for the use of the pavilion. I would like to thank Supervisor Corcoran and the Board for considering my request. Sincerely, Kathy Sylvester. So the day, she did give you those dates prior, right?
Yep.
Yep. So does it, they're all good. So does anybody have any problem with that, them using it? It's a self-funding program. We allow them to use it. Mr. Alexander charges very minimal for his services to come there and do it, and then that's it, and they provide insurance and all that kind of stuff, so. All right, so I would need a motion to waive the fees for line dancing.
I made the motion to waive the fees for the line dancing. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. All right, Danielle, you'll let her know, or I'll let her know tomorrow? I'll let her know. Yep. Okay, so this one is from Clearwater, Milton Landing. So this is the Outreach of Engagement Manor at the Hudson River Slope Clearwater. I am writing to acknowledge the completion of the Milton Landing project and to express my interest in revisiting the dock in 2023. Going on 54 years, Hudson River Slope Clearwater has united people, communities, and the larger Hudson Valley region together through environmental education, activism, and music. Our programs brighten lives and foster the next generation environmental stewards through nationally recognized program aboard American Environmental Flagship. Together, the Hudson River and its tributaries create irreplaceable habitat for endangered species, clean tap water for millions of people, and recreational opportunities for people in the most densely populated and diverse region in the country. The depth of our work has allowed Clearwater and grassroots organizations, built by individuals donating their time, energy, and skills to preserve, to protect the Hudson River, to become a cultural institution. HRSC provides many opportunities for community involvement throughout the year. We offer sought-after programs such as educational opportunities in classrooms or aboard our 106-foot iconic Hudson River Slope for group, for grade school, to post-secondary institutions. Public sales, providing program and waterfront community events up and down the river, and we look forward to the next 50 years. We hope to deepen our investment in communities on the river through strategic partnerships, particularly those facing significant barriers to accessing the river system. The Milton Pier provides quality-of-life improvements with fishing and boating access educational program and enhance opportunity to enjoy the scenic beauty of the river. This year, Clearwater has interest from the local school groups to charter the sailing classroom, our signature program from the Milton Pier. The dates are 4/19 through 4/20, and 5/8 through 5/9. The effort will include parking and picking up, drop-off, and overnight berth at the pier. Additionally, as a nonprofit, we are asking the dock and fee be waived in exchange for providing a service to the community. If all goes well, we hope to revisit the summer and fall for public sales and waterfront events for the public. I can't begin to count the number of docks that Clearwater has lost the ability to host and engage with local community members. We hope that while the pier has been used for cruise ships in the fall, that we're able to continue relationship with local government and communities at the dock. As the river continues to become more of a commercial and recreational attraction, Clearwater gets priced out, and our legacy no longer passed down to new owners and managers. This is not because of lack of interest in the communities on the Hudson Valley, but due to limited space and distinct challenges of arranging docking logistics in a time where yachts and other motor-powered vessels are catered to when docks and marinas are being built or refurbished. Sincerely, Amalik Kanabalak, Outreach and Engagement Manager, Hudson River Slope Clearwater. So they're asking for us to waive our docking fees for 4/19, 4/20, 5/8, and 5/9. And so, I mean, as of now, we don't have any docking right there. I have to go through my office to book this routine, um, but I'd have to get approval by the Board to waive the fees. So are you guys okay with that, or are you not okay with that?
Yeah, we're okay with that. I'm okay with that. I'll make a motion to waive the fees for the Clearwater to dock at the pier.
Can I, I'm fully in favor of that. I think it's great.
I'm in favor.
I wonder if Marlboro schools are doing any activity on the boat or have any opportunity while it's so close, and.
I believe that's who's gonna be going on at the Milton.
Okay.
Do they charge the schools?
That's, yeah.
They charge the schools?
That's where S&amp;M.
I don't think they do. I think it's all nonprofit.
I think it's nonprofit, that's why. They don't make no money.
Yeah.
I mean, I could ask that question, but I don't think they charge. That's why they don't want to be charged.
And we're not having anything on the.
No, we don't have anything in now. I mean, this could, we could start having stuff starting next year, so for this year, it's not a problem, but for next year, American Cruise Lines plans on going there, and they have first rights to use the dock according to our agreement. Not that, you know, Slope Clearwater can't pick dates that are available, but there will be dates that aren't available next year. As of right now, these dates, I would pretty much say are available, because I know all his dates are towards the fall right now, so.
I think we should ask about the fee. I'm on their website, and it does mention a fee. It doesn't say what the fee is, but it mentions a fee when you book it for a school, so.
It's probably like a. We have lights, we have pretty good lighting down there now, and I know they have lights on their boat, so I could ask that.
There's no activity, they're just there.
They're just there docking their boat, and there's probably like a couple crew on board, I'm assuming, just so no one goes back on the boat, so.
It would be nice if the school, Marlboro School District would take advantage of this and have the kids.
Well, I'm assuming if he's talking about school districts participating, if they're docking and are docked, they're gonna probably have our schools go there. But I can confirm that. I would have to assume that, so. But I don't, I guess that in today's world, never assume anything.
That is correct. I would also see if they're charging the school district fees, that I would like.
They might, I mean, they may charge a fee, because again, like, everything they do is based on donations and things, so I mean, if they're charging a minimal fee, it's probably to help cover their cost of just operating the boat, right?
Fuel and stuff like that.
So, but I could find out what that is, that's not a problem. But are you okay, if everything else is good, to waive those fees? I guess is what I'm saying. Or do you want to wait until I find those answers out?
No. I'm good with waiving the fees. No, I made the motion, I need somebody to second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll get you those answers, though. All right. This one I addressed her, that's not really a poor one. There's always one of these in here, right? Here it is. Letter of Resignation, Alexandria Martins. Town of Marlboro Police Department, 21 Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York. Dear Chief Coza, please accept this as a formal notice of resignation as the police officer of Town of Marlboro, Police Department, effective March 1st, 2023. I'd like to take this chance to say thank you for the opportunity. I enjoyed working it and learning from my colleagues. I am sure Town of Marlboro Police Department will continue to work towards betterment in protecting the community's people. Sincerely, Alexandria Martins.
She wasn't here that long.
No. You gotta send me that. Send me that.
Can I, can I ask that we hold off on approving the fee until Scott gets a little more information on the Slope Clearwater?
Yeah, I'll find out. Yeah, she wasn't here that long, Jerry. You scared her away.
I didn't get that. What did you come up with?
Their fees are kind of substantial that they charge the schools.
I'm not saying we should charge a fee. I fully support them parking there for no fee. I'm just thinking that if they're parking there, then perhaps we could work something out where our school gets to do this without the fee.
Yep.
I agree. That's the right thing to do. You're absolutely right on that one.
Can we reverse the motion?
That's exactly, exactly what I was gonna lean towards, is if they're gonna dock in Milton, then the Milton students should go free, or the Marlboro School District students should go free.
Just because, Manny, their website quotes rates at like $1,500 for a public school to go on the boat, which I'm sure our school is not in a position to pay right now, maybe, I don't know. I don't know. I don't want to speak for them. I just think we need to do a little more recon, a little more due diligence on that.
Yeah, I'll find out. Definitely. All right, here's another one. Reserve the Milton Train Station. Hello, Colleen and Danielle. The Sarah Hall Library, Free Library, has received a grant from the New York Council on the arts, and now that, the funds will soon be available. I'm in book and performances. I wonder if I could use the Milton Train Station on any of these Sundays. April 16th, May 7th, May 21st, the concert would be in the afternoon. And this is Louis Hessler Skelly, Library Director, Sarah Hall, Free Library. And did you got those dates?
So how do you handle that one? I'm assuming the dates are okay, otherwise you would have probably.
Yeah, well, I mean, if the Board's okay with the no fee, then we would just respond back that they're available or not available, but.
So it's the library requesting use of the train station for performances?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Council on Arts, yep, that they got a grant for. So I need a motion if you want to waive those fees.
I make the motion to waive the fees for the library.
I'll second that, Eddie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. This is the Marlboro Youth Baseball. This is from Nick Chisante, and it says, well, I won't read on the top, but. Marlboro Youth Baseball and Softball would like to request the town ball fields from March 15th to June 30th, Monday through Friday, 4 to 8, and Saturday and Sunday, 8 to 5. Thank you for organization to use the fields, and let me know if we can relinquish some time. And then is the dates are 4/22, 5/20. Well, these are the so far the dates available. Okay, you were giving them the dates that were available. So basically, from March 15th to June 30th is what they're using the baseball fields for up on the upper level. It's pretty much why they're there, so. If they're available, I don't see a problem with it myself, but I would need a motion to waive any usage fees for the Marlboro Youth Baseball and Softball.
I'll make the motion to waive the usage fees for the baseball fields at the town park for Marlboro Youth Baseball and Softball.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it. Of course. Okay, got that, got that. All right, this is the time we need to have any public comments. Anybody have any public comments? Anybody? Anybody? Oh, Mickey's out there waving.
I have a question that came up today as a matter of fact, from one of the Marlboro residents. Um, they wanted to know with the Tomback renovations of the, what type of flooring is gonna be there? And the reason is, um, to be, is there gonna be appropriate for dancing? It does not have to be wood, but it needs to be appropriate for dancing.
Funny you ask this because I've, uh, been having discussions about the flooring. Well, right now, it's, it's typical, you know, the PVC type.
Like linoleum.
Linoleum type flooring that, you know, you stick down. But they're the, they're more, they're not the twelve by twelve. They're the sixteen by sixteen. They're bigger tiles. On the community, that's on the community side. The recreational side was supposed to have rubber matting. Uh, it's kinda like what you would see at a fitness center. We've been having this discussion back and forth of not using that on that side, only because then it like really makes that side one use, right? So like if you do want to have parties on that side, and you want to put tables on that side, that flooring isn't really suitable for moving tables or pulling out chairs or doing things like that. So then we went to like just putting those tiles across the whole board because of cost. Uh, did look into, uh, well, we are looking into, uh, alternatives, I would say. Like, uh, a floating cushion, uh, manufactured wooden floor type. But the costs are just, it's just, they're extreme. I mean, you're not talking about a small space. These are huge spaces, especially the recreational side is sixty-five by thirty-five on just the addition. Then you still have the, the garages that were already there. So you're talking a big.
Big place.
Big, big number. But we are looking into alternatives. But right now, as it stands, I would say we're looking just to do everything in that PVC tile, which is not, it's not good for a give on your feet because there's a cement floor underneath, right? But, uh, I know before, you know, we did recreation there for about eight years. It's pretty much what they used. That was what was there. So it's just gonna come down to cost, Mickey.
Well, the only concern is, I know that part of the intention is to be able to use it for parties.
Yep.
Et cetera. So you just want to be able to make sure that people can actually dance on it. It doesn't have to be a special dance floor, but it has to be level.
Definitely gonna be level.
I'm getting my dancing shoes on, yeah. Can't wait to rent it out.
I mean, we talked about getting creative and like putting the center part of the community side, like a brown or tile, so it looks like a dance floor. But it could still be PVC tile. But let's see if we could come up with some other creative ways. I would love to put the, the wooden type floating floor, but it's just, it's expensive and it's just.
Well, it's on your radar. That's all. I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar.
We've been thinking about it, but it's expensive. It's a, until you get in there and see how much more space is in there, you're not gonna realize it. It's, I mean, that recreation side is bigger than this room and totally open. There's no instructions.
That's exciting.
It's, it's a big room. I mean, right now it looks even bigger because the ceiling is totally still open. But it's, it's still gonna have twelve foot ceiling. So it's gonna be, it's gonna feel bigger too. So. And it's gonna have a lot of windows, so it's gonna have a lot of light. So.
Maybe we need to start having bingo there.
Maybe. Well, my vision, like I keep telling everybody, is that you're gonna walk into the normal community side. And that's where the kitchen side is. But that's gonna be your reception area, cocktail hour. And then on the other side is gonna be your main event for your wedding or whatever you're gonna have. And then in the garage areas, they'll set up a temporary like serving area for drinks and stuff. You have weddings there. I'm telling you.
I don't wanna have a wedding here.
You know how many people that used to have weddings there?
Will you turn me into a catering hall?
We're gonna turn it into a catering hall.
I'm more in the camp of the softer floor for the recreational things on the one side.
For the community as a whole, this is a, I think it's gonna be used quite a bit for things like that. I could tell you right now. That's what, and that's what we've gotten a lot of actually feedback that people that want to rent it. Not only that too, I wanna, I'm also reaching out to different organizations for conferences. Having conferences there, having a training there for like different engineering groups and maintenance types groups. Because we're gonna have a meeting room that has a actual projection screen, the actual community room and the rec room will have a projection screen. So you could rent the place out more than just the weekends, like you could rent it during the week. And, you know, any kind of revenue we can make to help pay for the additional expenses that we're incurring on the building goes right back into our fund balance, right? So, you know, my thing is I don't want to limit the one side to just one thing. And I think if we put the rubber flooring, that's what it's gonna do.
I think the rubber flooring would be too much. Stay with the PVC tiles. You get more use out of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about one thing, right? You know, when you're talking Zoom, but yeah, it would be great for their event. Or if you're doing, maybe you had karate classes or whatever it might be in there, it's a great. But maybe those things, there could be rollout mats or something like that for them, right?
Yeah.
So, and then you could roll them back because we're gonna have a, there's a, a room that they could store things, you know, so. So, we're trying to come up with the most usable space we probably can and then actually get the most out of it for the community, right? So, but, yeah, we're thinking about it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's a long winded answer.
Do bathrooms in the Tomback be neutral or are they connected?
No, just a men's room and a women's room. There's two, that's it. That's it. And they're brand new and they're bigger. But no, yeah, we didn't, we don't have that. Because we, we thought, we, we, well, we thought about it actually. I'm not gonna say we didn't. Because when we had our Tomback committee meetings and all that, it was something that came up. Just cost and location and where we would put it and how we would do it. And, uh, it just, it never came to happen. So, so it's just the two normal bathrooms. Yep, yep. All right, anybody else? All right, resolutions then. And when we get these local laws, I'm gonna be just like I did before. Um, we've been through these, uh, before. I'm not gonna read every single thing in it. It's all online. We've talked about this at our last meeting. Um, I'm just gonna read some of the bullet parts of it and then we'll vote. Unless you guys have objections to anything. No? Okay. So Resolution forty to adopt local law number two of the year twenty twenty-three, amending chapter one forty-five, vehicle and traffic. Article eight penalties, providing the town board with the authority to set fines of parking offenses through the Town of Marlboro fee schedule and to provide the code enforcement officers with the authority to issue parking summonses. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas a local law was introduced to be known as local law number two of twenty twenty-three, entitled the local law of the Town of Marlboro, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter one forty-five, vehicles and traffic. Article eight penalties, providing the town board with the authority to set fines for parking offenses through the Town of Marlboro fee schedule and to provide the town, the code enforcement officer authority to issue parking summonses. Whereas a public hearing in relation to the said local law was held on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M prevailing time. And whereas notice of said public hearing was given pursuant to the terms and provision of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York. And where said local law has been on the desk of the members of the town board and of the, of Town of Marlboro for at least seven days exclusive of Sunday. Now therefore be resolved to file local law hereby be enacted. And again, it's all we talked about. This is all the thing. That's what Mary Beth was talking about, right? The different ones. Servability repeal, authority. Effective date, this law shall become effective upon filing with the office of the New York State Secretary of State in accordance with the municipal home rule law. Resolve that the town clerk shall file a certified original of this local law in the office of the town clerk and one certified copy in the office secretary of state of state of New York. Said certified copy to have attached there to a certificate that it contains the correct text of the enactment of this local law. And the foregone resolution was duly put to vote, which resolved as the file. Yes.
Congressman Mullinelli?
Yes.
Congressman Crappie?
Yes.
Congressman Montezetta?
Yes.
Thank you. March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Resolution forty-one to adopt local law number three of the year twenty twenty-three, amending chapter sixty-seven, building construction, article one of administration and enforcement, section three, code enforcement officer inspector granting the code enforcement office authority to issue summonses for parking offenses as defined under chapter one forty-five of the town code. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas local law was introduced to be known as local law number three of twenty twenty-three, entitled the local law of the Town of Marlboro, Ulster County, New York, amending chapter sixty-seven, building construction, article one, administration and enforcement, section three, code enforcement officer inspector granting the code enforcement office authority to issue summonses for parking offenses as defending under chap, defined under chapter one forty-five of the town code. Whereas a public hearing in relation to the said local law was held on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M prevailing time. And whereas notice of the said public hearing was given pursuant to the terms and provisions of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York. And whereas the said local law has been on the desk of the members of the town board of the Town of Marlboro for at least seven days exclusive of Sunday. Now therefore be resolved to file local law be hereby be enacted. Again, the purpose is giving him the ability to write code violation, I mean, uh, summonses. It's on the article sixty-seven three. And it's add in number twelve here to issue summonses for parking offenses defined in one forty-five twenty-one code. And effective date, this law shall become effective upon filing with the office of the New York State Secretary of State in accordance with the municipal home rule law. Resolve that the town clerk shall file a certified original of this local law in the office of the town clerk and one certified copy in the office of secretary of state of New York. Said certified copy to have been attached there to a certificate that is contains the correct text of the enactment of this local law. The foregone resolution was duly put to a vote, which resolved, resulted as follows. Yes.
Congressman Mullinelli?
Yes.
Congressman Crappie?
Yes.
Congressman Montezetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution forty-two to adopt a useful life schedule. And this came from our budget officer and our auditors. And so we, uh, they want, um, useful life of, uh, things that we have around town. And you'll see the list as I get there. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas fixed assets are non, are non-current assets that have a useful life of over one year. And whereas fixed assets are depreciated over their useful life. Be it resolved that the town board of the Town of Marlboro hereby adopts the attached useful life schedule for the fixed assets. And these are the attached schedule, the fixed assets are useful life description. And you could see all the different years and months that we anticipate the minimal useful life. The South Pier, we gave thirty years. I hope it's more than thirty years, but in thirty years, it's probably gonna need repair. So that's why it's a useful life. Buildings typically like these, fifty years, and they gotta have major repair, fencing twenty, things like that. Speakers, plows. Anybody have any objections to those? No? Okay. And be it resolved, that moves for its adoption.
Yes.
Congressman Montezetta?
Yes.
Congressman Crappie?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes, thank you. Resolution forty-three to advertise for highway items. We do this every year. It's that time of the year. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, resolve the town board authorize the town clerk to advertise for the following highway materials. Item number one, road materials washed stone, three-quarter inch stone. Item four, delivered per New York State specs. Item number two, materials, haulings, specs available for the town clerk's office. Now therefore be resolved, the town board authorize the town clerk to place a legal notice in the office official newspaper for the town requesting sealed bids on highway items. And that all bids must be accompanied by a signed non collusion affidavit. And be it further resolved that all bids be received by the office of the town clerk. Twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, one two five four seven, until two P M, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at which time they will be opened and read aloud. And moves for its adoption.
Congressman Mullinelli?
Yes.
Congressman Montezetta?
Yes.
Congressman Crappie?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. I'm not gonna hesitate like you. Resolution forty-four to advertise for fuel items. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, resolve the town board authorize the town clerk to advertise for the following items. Item number one propane, item number two heating fuel. Now therefore be resolved, the town board authorize the town clerk to place a legal notice in the official newspaper for the town requesting sealed bids on fuel items. And that all bids must be accompanied by a signed non collusion of affidavit. And be further resolved that all bids be received by the office of the town clerk. Twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, one two five four seven, until two P M, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at which time they will be opened and read aloud. And moves for its adoption.
Congressman Mullinelli?
Yes.
Congressman Montezetta?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And Resolution forty-five to accept the application of the towing license. So we had an opening on the towing list. So we got an application. And the chief and the code enforcement officer reviewed. I sent you guys all the documents, right? It's for review. And here's the resolution. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the Town of Marlboro Town Code, chapter one forty, tow trucks, states that the town clerk shall accept applications for permits from persons desired to tow in the Town of Marlboro. And whereas the town board of the Town of Marlboro must approve the application before the town clerk can issue the permit. Be it resolved, the application, application from J B V tow be approved and moves for its adoption.
Jerry, I just have one question. How many towing companies do we have now?
Seven.
Didn't we say there was gonna be a limit? Right, I didn't know how many it was. Now, we haven't had a meeting to update fees or anything like that in a long time, have we?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Because I wasn't involved. Okay, I wasn't involved. I was involved in the first one.
The last one.
I did a couple of, I wasn't involved in this last one. That's why I asked.
We did it's.
Two months ago.
We did it before January. Because we did the adjustments in January.
Yeah, I never, I never knew.
We made the adjustments and they were in the, the fee schedule.
I understand they're in the fee schedule, but the last time I was on the police committee.
That's only maybe in five years that we had or something.
Right, the last one I was in, I didn't get invited to that one. Okay.
This was, this will make the eighth company.
This will make the eighth company? I thought seven.
We have seven. This will make number eight our cap until somebody else resigns, leaves, or otherwise move away. And this will be next to C S A.
Yeah, I know where it is. Okay. The other question I have for you too is, have you had any complaints from people that have been impounded? Getting tough to get their car out or anything like that? Everything's been good, even with.
We did have some complaints from motor towers. In reference to a particular company, their lots under construction. So that's all been worked out and confirmed to be working out.
Okay.
And yet, that's doing.
Because I remember we used to have a lot of complaints.
Nothing from you, sorry.
Okay. And we're still at the point where they have to be available nine to five, Monday through Friday, or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
None of that's changed. Uh, there's hours of operation and there's, um, special clauses for lease on weekends and things like that. All dictated in the law.
But I'm saying that everybody has a number to reach. Because I know these guys aren't sitting in their offices, I mean.
No, we have twenty-four seven numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? And you good?
That'd be yes.
All right.
Yes.
Senator McAlvee?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Eddie, it's your time, buddy.
It's my time. Uh, make a motion to adjourn? I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Be safe tomorrow. Hopefully nothing happens.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have no clue how many mountains are coming.
Huh?
I have no clue how much snow's coming tomorrow.
It changes.
It's not that cold out, so.
It changes in the air.
It's gonna be like heavy snow if anything.
And then if it, yeah, but then it's gonna rain behind it. It's gonna be forty tomorrow.
Yeah, that's.